She's ready. Good evening, I'd like to call the order, the Columbia Heights School Board, regular school board meeting of Independent School District thirteen of Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Meyer?
Here.
Landry?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Bardell?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Lee, here.
Thank you very much. As is our custom, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values in this district are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next on our agenda this evening, we do have Heights Lights this evening, and I believe we're gonna have Ms. Scully come and say a few words.
You can bring the students up, too.
Yep.
Makes you motion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
These two gals, Andrea Pomel, were acknowledged on Saturday at the Scholastic Art Awards Show at the Purpitch Center for Arts Education. We have done the Scholastic Art Awards Show for about seventy-five years. It's a national exhibition contest, and it's funded by Scholastic Magazine Company in New York City. Locally, it's funded by the Purpitch Arts Center and the Art Educators of Minnesota. We had twenty-four hundred submissions this year, and out of twenty-four hundred submissions, it's juried by a panel of three people. Quincy had a photograph that won a Silver Key. Jackie had a portfolio, which means that she submitted eight works, and she won a Gold Key, which is the highest award that you can get, for her portfolio. And Andrea Pomel also submitted a portfolio and got a Gold Key for her photographs. And so there were ninety-five portfolios that were judged by the panel of three, and our students received two out of the seven Gold Keys that were given out for those ninety-five portfolios. There were a total of about five hundred works on display at the Purpitch Center. I've got some pictures for you if they come up. This was the Purpitch Center, and what it looked like with all the people walking around, looking at the, looking at the works. And then we have Andrea getting her Gold Key certificate from Sue Mackert, who is the Director at the Purpitch Center for Arts Education. And then, of course, moms and dads were there. So there's Andrea and her mom. Andrea's portfolio was really about our school and our diversity of our school. She had taken a lot of pictures of our students, in fact, our Muslim students, and this one is called rap. And Jackie with her mom and dad. And Jackie's piece was very, very large. She can talk about it. It's pretty novel because she used, she used some recycled material and decided to draw on it. And Quincy's piece. So, go ahead and ask them questions, 'cause they're both really quiet.
Yay! Nice teacher, huh? Putting you on the spot like that. How much time do you have invested into the portfolio or the artwork that you had done, either one of you?
Basically, all year.
All year? Okay.
Yeah, all year long.
Yeah, it's continuous, pretty much. You never really stop working on it. Always there.
Yeah, like, a couple days or a couple hours, or, I don't know, it varies from piece to piece. I don't know, the longest one is maybe like four days or something.
So Quincy, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Tell them, explain to them how you took this photograph.
Okay, so, I would have a bucket of water, and I'd have like a pole, and then a baggie with water dripping down. And I'd have a background behind it with some colors on it, and then a light hitting that, so it'd hit the water, and then I would capture the drop when it would hit.
This was done at home, and she would sit there for hours and wait for the drops to drop. Right?
Yeah.
And then Jackie, how about yours? Talk about yours. Where'd you get your piece of paper, that bright yellow piece of paper?
Oh, um, so, I was Ms. Scully's aide this semester, and she sent me over to help Ms. Malish unpack some art supplies, and there's a big box of just paper and random things. And inside it, there was all this, like, wadded-up pieces of legal paper that hadn't been cut. And so I decided to use it as my paper, and, I don't know, it was just really weird, and me and Ms. Malish were like, she was gonna throw it away, but she's like, "I can't bring myself to throw this away, because it looks so cool, like, some art student should make something out of it." And so I was like, "Okay, I will." And that's what I made. I like took mirrors, and I was drawing self-portraits and different sorts of things, like, on, 'cause it was like pieces of paper that hadn't been cut yet, so I wrote like lists upside-down on it, you can't see it in the picture, and it's like random parts of things through my life.
And Andrea joined us, and Andrea, why don't you talk about your work?
Well, this was a project-
Talk into the microphone.
Oh. Well, I had to do this project for photography, and I tried to capture the action and movement. And my friend, who's the one wearing the gold hijab, when she turned around, it was, I just really liked it, 'cause it created a really, to me, was wonderful motion, like, so it's like, I'm gonna capture it, and it turned out really nice, 'cause it was, like, when she run and like the movements, it's just the way the hijab moved with her, it just created a really interesting thing to look at. That's how, and my teacher helped me with, like, the editing, the things, the colors, 'cause from other pictures also was capturing other friends having fun, and the diversity in the school. You cannot see it all the pictures, but it's mostly a lot of diversity. People in other, like, places were not, doesn't know about people who wear hijabs or Muslims, so it was really nice trying to take pictures of diversity within my school. That was my project.
Looks like you accomplished your goal.
Yeah.
Oh, it's beautiful. All, all of them are beautiful.
I, I do have a question. Are any of these gonna be exhibited over, at the, at the school?
Yes, they will be. Jackie's is, is back, and hers is very, very large. Quincy took hers home, but I think hers will be back. If not, Quincy also got three honorable mentions. We got nine honorable mentions besides these girls getting their three separate awards, and so we did pretty well. And all of these three are in AP Studio Art this year. Jackie is, tell them where you're gonna go and what you're gonna do when you graduate. Do you know?
Not exactly.
Well, she, she's looking at University of Wisconsin Stought, right?
Yeah.
And in Industrial Design. Andrea is a senior also.
Yeah, I don't know what college it is, but I'm thinking Rochester, Southern Technology, and I would like to be a chemical engineer.
And Quincy is a junior. And so, yes, they will be on display. We will have them for the Silverwood Show, if not before that.
Excellent.
Great. Well, I have some certificates, the obligatory certificate here. And I'll just warn you, this guy's gonna have a camera. I'll read each of these certificates. Andrea Pomel, Columbia Heights High School is recognized for receiving the Minnesota Scholastic Arts Gold Key Award from Art Educations Minnesota. Congratulations, Andrea. Also, Jackie Anderson is recognized for receiving the Minnesota Scholastic Arts Gold Key Award from Art Educations Minnesota. And Quincy Gross is recognized for receiving the Minnesota Scholastic Arts Silver Key Award from Minnesota. Congratulations, students, and congratulations, Ms. Scully. I know you probably had a little bit to do with it, too, so, so, the tools and mentoring and leadership, so, thank you. All right. It's hard to follow that up, but we'll try. Next on our agenda is Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence. I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Then that motion is carried. March eleventh, Tuesday, five p.m., Subcommittee on Policy Meeting in the Superintendent's Conference Room. March eleventh, Tuesday, seven p.m., regular school board meeting here in the community room. March seventeenth through twenty-first, no school, it's spring break. March twenty-fifth, Tuesday, seven p.m., is a regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
There is none. Excuse me, Chair Bardell.
All right. No problem. All right, next on our agenda is Communication to the Board. At this time, any citizen employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if so desired, request that the administration follow up on those questions. The board, however, will not take action at the meeting on request presented at this time. Anyone who'd like to come for the board doesn't look like it, so I think we'll move on. Next on our agenda is Acknowledgements of Contributions. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Laura. I'll read the resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute one-twenty-three B zero-two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donation, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by School Board Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number Thirteen that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of two thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars fifty-one cents. The monetary awards, a donation of seventy-nine dollars ninety-five cents each was made to Valley View Elementary by Lisa Moore for student needs. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund, Kiwanis Club of Columbia Heights, Fridley, in the amount of two thousand dollars. Donation of gymnastics supplies and equipment to Columbia Heights High School Gymnastics Team from Monom Misskey, estimated value three hundred sixty-five dollars fifty-six cents. Donation of uniform pants, shirts, and shorts to Valley View Elementary from Oak Hill Baptist, estimated value eighty dollars. Donation of books to Highland Elementary from Molly Tadding, estimated value of two hundred dollars. Total fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen monetary contributions to date, twenty-seven thousand five hundred six dollars sixty-one cents. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none? Call the roll, please.
Palmer?
Aye.
Bardell?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Landry?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
Lee?
Thank you, and that. Did I skip the consent agenda? Did I? Oops. All right, now we'll go to the consent agenda, since I skipped it. I have a motion to move the consent agenda aboard.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Sorry about that. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Thank you, and that motion is carried. I do apologize, I was ahead of myself. All right, reports from members of the board, discussion reports and information items. Board members can, will, report on board activities since last week are scheduled being of the Board of Education. I will start with Lori Meyer.
Well, I was at last week's work session, and then just attended the focus group meeting on communications prior to the meeting tonight. And then I just had some meetings with some fellow board members, so I want to thank John, Missy, and Ted for their time this last week or so. And that's all I have to report this time.
All right, thank you. Ted?
Yeah, I was also at the Communication Focus Group, and, and just for the public, that's to get input on our communication, the status of our communication as a district, and, and some ideas for how to improve the communication. So various groups are being, having a representative from a national public relations organization ask some questions, just get that feedback. So it's, it's a great process we're, we're starting out. I also attended the work session last week, and, um, attended a WMAP board meeting. WMAP is trying to focus on the future and how to reorganize the superintendent, he's gonna be retiring, so how to move forward past that and, and thrive. Also attended an all-night party, the Senior Party Casino fundraiser, had one full, very full bus of, of very generous people to donate to the all-night party, so it was, it was a great time, and many thanks to the, the committee for organizing and everybody that attended. And then also attended the high school PTO meeting last night. We could have more people, we had three, so that's, it's a brand-new organization, and it's great that it's getting off the ground. Now we just need to fill those seats with, with lots of interested parents and make it, really make it go. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. John?
I also was at the work session last week, the focus group this evening, and had the opportunity to attend the high school band concert last night, so saw the jazz band, symphonic and concert band, it was very entertaining, they do a really nice job.
All right, thank you. Laura?
I just attended the work-study session last week, and that's pretty much it for me. It's been quiet, other than shoveling, so I think we've all been doing lots and lots.
Thank you. Missy?
Work session, also the focus group, and I've had a couple conversations with some people out of the National School Boards Association, which have been real enlightening, and I will be attending in the next two days state board meetings, plus the counties, cities, schools, meetings up at the Capitol in the next two days.
Very good. I also attended the work session, and along with John, I attended the high school band concert last night. I agree, they did a really nice job. I also had the opportunity of going to the two-sectional boys' swim meets Wednesday, rescheduled from Friday, which was then on Saturday over at St. Kate's, and although we didn't have anybody place being able to go on to state, our entire team advanced to the finals of sectionals, which was a huge accomplishment, so congratulations. And had a meeting with Superintendent Kelly, and that's it for me. Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair members, the high school principal's search is underway, and administration hopes to bring a recommendation for a permanent replacement to the school board in April. Local seven-ten chief negotiator and I met regarding formalizing the, the agreed-upon teacher evaluation process, and that discussion still continues in this area. The achieve program had its quarterly review with the Director of Student Services and the Program AP and the Assessments Coordinator, and the program appears to be on track and making progress, and we have added at this, over the course of the mid-year, mid-year the sixth graders into the program that were designated, so it appears to be growing and thriving. I want to thank the Columbia Heights Booster Club for once again sponsoring the Columbia Academy Appreciation Night. Last week, it was before a basketball game, and I have to tell you that I hadn't had dinner that night, and I enjoyed my hot dog and mac and cheese, as well as all the students, so thank you for always being so persistent and diligent in doing that for us. Director Hollaby and Burkes and I had a final conference call with the District Management Council, and that was regarding the special education audit findings. The focus of the report was to effectuate economies in this area of special education and to talk about how we could improve student achievement. And the recommendations will be undertaken and will be reported out at a future board meeting by Director Hollaby, probably sometime in March, was, it's been a very worthwhile process for us. Pre-K twelve staffing is underway, which usually starts at this time of year and expands about six to eight weeks, and that are communications between district and building-level administrators stemming from the board resolution to effectuate economies and look for program revisions. As Member Landwear reported out and others said they attended, the communication audit is really underway this week. It's an intense look at our communication system, and for those of, of those of you here and those of you listening that have agreed to participate, I want to thank you in advance. We look forward to your participation all this week, and we look forward to taking the findings and putting it into a communications plan for the district. The Aligning Technology and Career and College Readiness Pathway Committee continues to do its work. They were here last night again until very late, and they are going to have invitations out to external stakeholder focus group members in March to come in and take a look at the work, and once the work is refined, we'd like to bring it to the school board for review in April. I've had individual meetings with members Landwear and Larkin, and agenda planning meetings with members Bardell and Larkin, and individual phone calls with members Meyer and Lee, and I want to thank all the board members for those opportunities to dialogue and plan with you over the last couple weeks. That concludes my report.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, next on our agenda item are, is building vision cards, and tonight we're gonna hear from Columbia Academy, and this evening we have Dwayne Burgers, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Mary Busman, Columbia Academy Principal. Welcome.
Evening.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, pleased to be here with my colleague, Principal Busman. We've done a lot of work together over this last year, and hard work, work that is about looking for the long-term success of our kids and doing whatever it takes. I know that when we look tonight at our data, that there's pieces where we're still getting better, and we have many, many great things happening at the academy. Lots of hard work that's going on amongst the administration there, and the teachers, and the students, and so proud to be colleague of Principal Busman, and we've, we've had our spats, but we usually get over them, so.
In less than a day.
In less than a day, so. But we, as always, start with our mission, which is to create worlds of opportunities for every learner, and I think you'll see that that truly is the case at Columbia Academy. We are working hard to do that. We are striving for excellence, and that is a path that does not come easy. There's no shortcuts, there's no, you know, easy way to do it, you do it through hard work, you do it, there's no skipping certain points, and so we're doing that, I believe, step by step, through strong collaboration amongst parents, teachers, administration. One of the great things that Principal Busman and her team has done down at the academy, I believe, is, is really put in programming that attracts students to our schools, and you can see that that climb, that steady climb continues in our enrollment, and you see it, you see it in the, the number of kids, it's very obvious that we are fuller than we were not so long ago. Our demographics are similar to last year, small changes, but we remain a very, very diverse school, as you can see, with a large number of students of color, but large, almost fairly even split, I should say, between white, Hispanic, and black. Our demographics for free and reduced lunch, this has also been a steady climb, which is part of the challenge that we work through on a daily basis, but we are at eighty-two percent now currently at this point in time at Columbia Academy. Special education and EL are both very similar in size, about seventeen and eighteen percent respectively, and of course, those students come with special challenges that we work hard to meet. So this is a little different than the data that we showed you in our first meeting in the, with you this year about MCAs. This is our card, our vision card that we're talking through, and so this first part A is about our implementation and how that's going. In A one, I'll read it to you, it's the use of articulated standards-based curriculum. In other words, we are standards-based, and I think that's one of the things that Principal Busman has emphasized, ninety percent of our classrooms are doing so. Our strategic plan in A two talks about licensed staff engaging in PLCs, with the four questions being, what do we want our students to learn? Are they learning it? How do we know that they're learning it? If they're not learning it, what are we gonna do about it? If they have learned it, then what are we gonna do about that as well? And Principal Busman has really taken this as a theme at the academy, with ninety-five percent, really, I believe it's closer to a hundred percent of all teachers engaging in this on a regular basis. Been very fun this year to watch the improvement there. We believe it is key to the continuous improvement of any building. The use of formative assessment, again, many great things happening there, especially now with the use of iPads, that instantaneous feedback is more and more possible with more and more kids. In A four, the use of effective teaching strategies resulting in student engagement, you'll hear Principal Busman talk about some of the strategies, some of the work that's been done this year to really address this. Principal Busman and I have started doing walkthroughs together and being able to observe this, a real fun part of our week to be able to do that. Presence of, in use of classroom-invented twenty-first century learning. We know that that's not just about computers, but there is lots of exciting things happening this year at the academy with the personalized learning initiative and iPads, and, but there are lots of other computers also in use, many great things that we're using down there to really personalize the learning experience of our students. We have a lot of great teachers there. There's no shortage of, of teachers that when you walk into that room, you say, "That's good teaching, that's the kind of classroom that I would want my student, my child in." And so we're, we're proud of the team down there, and there's, if you ever want to take a tour with Principal Busman to some great classrooms, it's, there's a long list of teachers to go and see. One of the other things that Principal Busman and her team has really committed to is that multi-tiered intervention. If you aren't reading at grade level, if you're not doing math at grade level, you do it every day. We're in an every-other-day schedule, but if you're behind, you do it every day, and that's one of the ways that we are really working with kids who are behind more than just a little bit to catch them up. Finally, Columbia Academy also has really taken steam to heart engineering and the arts, while not in every classroom, the integration of that is still a work in progress. that is still a work in progress. It is deeply embedded and with really excellent learning taking place, teaching taking place in our engineering classrooms, in our art classrooms, in our science and math as well. So, that is about our achievement of our implementation of programs. It's a measure that is part of our vision cards for the strategic plan. The second part, though, is we also do have some goals which are written to tests. And we have that again across the levels that you've seen with other scorecards that we have. Again, going through that, here is where we talk a little bit about growth and proficiency with the number of students meeting their growth targets, spring to spring at forty-five, with fifty percent of our students who met their growth springs in, I'm sorry, and then in the next one with the percentage of students by student group meeting NWA map growth. There's a less than ten percent difference between any student group to target. So, again, measuring not only the growth, but do we have gaps in our growth. In addition to that, forty-nine percent of our students assessed at the secondary level reached proficiency. That was thirty percent of Columbia Academy students in proficiency range for reading on the MCA. We had thirty-three, thirty-five percent of all secondary students proficient in, and thirty-three percent of those, again, from Columbia Academy. Thirty-five percent of all students assessed proficient in science. And then a gap that we were looking at between fifteen to twenty-four percent for any of our student groups to standard. So, while this is very different than the kind of data that we show you when we just go straight proficiency, this is the data that we are also marking. It's our way to look at as far as baseline and improvement. Are we going from levels, one level to the next? And especially looking at those gaps. Do we have gaps? Are they improving? Are they decreasing, I should say, or increasing? And measuring that as well. But really, what we'd like to do today, as well as look at these data points, is really talk about what are the goals in place and what are the strategies in place that we are using to reach those goals at Columbia Academy. And for that, I'll turn it over to Principal Busman.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, thanks for having me here this evening. And I, as well, am honored to sit next to my colleague, Director Burkes, amazing gentleman, and who works tirelessly for this district. And his work at Columbia Academy, while we have gone toe-to-toe and his feet are much bigger than mine, we have worked things out. And I really appreciate that because we, together, are tackling this challenge of student achievement. The thing that I really admire as well about Dwayne is that he's willing to, to be there for us. He's willing to say yes when he can. And he's willing to fight for the improvement. And we get to the same page. And I really appreciate that, that we are on the same team together, working really hard for our students. Together, we came up with the, we looked at our data. And we believe that we can get to thirty-nine percent proficiency in reading by this spring. And that would be up nine percentage points. We believe that we can get to forty percent proficiency in math, which would be an increase of seven percentage points. And we believe that we can reach proficiency, reach the proficiency level of thirty percent of our students being proficient in science. And that's just at eighth grade. Reading, math, those are tested at grade six, seven, and eight. And science is only tested at eighth grade. So, that would be an increase of five percentage points. Most importantly, we want to tackle this one. And there's a difference between MAP and MCAs for us. We want eighty percent of our students to meet their MCA math and reading growth goals. So, every student has a target score for MCAs. Fewer of them achieved that target, target score on their MCAs last year than they did on their MAP. And we are scratching our heads a little bit about that. So, we have worked together and we've come up with some ideas that I'll tell you about as we go forward. But we're really focusing on the MCA and practicing for that. So, we have worked together, teaching and learning, and the Columbia Academy leadership team, which includes our teachers and the administrative team at Columbia Academy, to put together a continuous improvement plan. And that continuous improvement plan, we've looked at math strategies, strategies for teaching reading, writing in the content areas, test preparation strategies, and high five. And I'll talk a little bit about each one of those. The high five was a way for us to really, we had a lot of different ideas. And we can't, we couldn't do everything. But we figured if we picked these five, we would get to the heart of what we needed to do at Columbia Academy. And the first one is professional learning communities. We have had about, I don't know, was it fifteen people attend the De For's convention, who talks about professionalized, professional learning communities. We've done those summer conventions. And where we really target professional conversations, it's teachers coming together to understand, how did you teach that concept? And how did you teach that concept? And where did our students get that concept? And if we do test item analysis, where did they get the item wrong? And that was the conversation that started happening in the math PLC. And it's taken us three years to do that because it's really hard work. It's really hard to give that pre-test, teach, post-test, and then come back and actually analyze the data. And part of that has been helpful because we now are on Schoology. And thank you, Director Hennigens, for working with our technology so much. So, we're able to do those kinds of things. Our professional learning communities are really important. Let's see, I think if you keep going, there we go, one more back. We meet from seven forty-five to eight forty in the mornings. That means on Thursdays, one teacher will take half the star classes, or will take somebody else's star class, so that person can be in their PLC. Math and reading PLCs meet each week. And again, as I mentioned, we pre-test, we teach, and then we post-test to understand how our students made gains and where the mistakes went, are. And teaching and learning is with us for math and reading as well. One of the other key ideas we talked about is this concept of hugging the text. And our English and reading teachers are teaching it explicitly. But our social studies and science teachers are also using these concepts. And it'll be something that the kids can take right to the MCA reading test. Highlight the main idea. Underline the supporting details. Gloss the text with your thinking, which means write notes, write in the margins, mark up your papers. And then summarize what you read. Tell your story. What did you read? So, if all of us are doing that across all of our content areas, and we're all using that same format, when a kid gets to that MCA test prep, they can go through hugs and help themselves through that process. We're also teaching writing across the content areas. Jen Kohan is a writing consultant that's been working with us. And our, and she's working with our PLCs to meet with them. Again, that pre-teaching, teaching and post-assessments. And I think the important thing to note at the secondary level is we're not just learning to write, but we're also writing to learn. So, if you can write about your content area, if you can write about what it is that you just learned, you're going to be able to explain it more and retain that concept, is what we think. The other thing we're doing is stealing from the ideas of the high school and that, and Avid. And that is have your planners with you. So, our students now have to bring to class a binder or notebook, their planner, in which we hope they write their assignments. Pencil and pen. And then our star teachers check those in the morning for readiness. In STAR, we've also redesigned how we're doing that. Mondays and Fridays, we'll have our circles of power and respect. Mondays being a goal-setting day, Fridays being a did we achieve our goal day. And on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, focusing on test prep in reading. And on Thursdays, it's with silent reading and homework and continued test prep if there's some extra work with that. You will still find, even though we are focusing on the core academics, that we are also focusing on STEAM. We continue those initiatives. Last year, we celebrated the Comic Book Convention, Comic Con. And some of you got to come to that. This year, our, our show will be Art Meets Engineering. And the art teachers and the engineering teachers have been designing projects that move. So, artists and engineers all have to design things that move. If you come into the eighth grade, they're designing a train station. It's fascinating. Lights, moving parts. It's really cool. We have a Lego Robotics team that has been competing and practicing. We hosted the Science Fair last year, the Engineering Fair concerts last year. We added the dance program. We're very excited about that. And our students participated in Banfield-Lock Sister City competition, as well as Silverwood. We also, you'll meet one of our award winners. She just was announced last month. Vivian won for her Scholastic Youth Art Month state flag. Jackie, one of your award recipients earlier this evening, she won this about four years ago. So, it's been really fun to have someone else walk in her shoes. We do a lot of things beyond the school day, as you know, encore classes. We had Alice in Wonderland this fall, Student Council Yearbook. We have open gym with the Columbia Heights Police Department every Tuesday, our first robotics competitions. I'm so happy that we have Where Everyone Belongs, our leaders, our eighth grade leaders. Right now, they are assisting and doing childcare for REACH, which is happening in our building. Those eighth grade students are absolutely amazing. And so, thank you for really encouraging us to do the web program. It's been just a wonderful thing for our kids to do. This year, we've added two things. One is Project Rebound. Project Rebound is for students who are failing two or more of their core classes. And we're having those students stay after school on Thursdays and Thursdays to get extra help in those core classes, to hopefully get themselves caught up for the next quarter. They are being taught by licensed teachers in those subject areas and really just focusing on the work of those core classes. Even more excitingly, we focused, when we looked at the data, and this is really fascinating to see, we've got a lot of kids who missed it by just that much in math and in reading. So, we have about eighty students who are within five points of meeting proficiency in the MCA math. So, we're trying to scoop up all of those eighty kids. I think we're at about fifty, between forty-five and fifty right now, that attend on Mondays and Wednesdays. And they receive extra training in math that is specifically targeted toward what are the strategies on the MCAs? What are the concepts, whether it's algebraic, or numeracy, or whatever it is that they have to work on? They're doing that Mondays and Wednesdays after school. Again, we've got really dedicated, passionate teachers who are excited to see our kids learn. This is a really fun group of kids to come down and see. So, Mondays and Wednesdays come between three-thirty and five. It's a great thing. Technology is continuing to go, personalized learning initiative, one-on-one iPads. The students use Schoology to really look where all their homework is, what are their assignments. They send their teachers their assignments through Schoology. Parents can log on with their students to see what the assignments are. Some other popular apps are Notability. ST Math has been something that kids use all the time to practice their, their math skills. And another popular one is iMovie that I've seen in engineering and social studies as well to tell their stories. Erin Kennedy was TIE's Teacher of the Year. Angel Brown, as you see here, she will be published, the publication is in March two thousand and fourteen in Science Scope Magazine. She co-wrote an article with University of Minnesota and now University of Ohio professors. And so, she is just a treat to continue to have with us. And then, once again, thank you for supporting our personalized learning initiative with our specialist, Amy Ochlager. She has been marvelous in keeping our kids on track and really running through with our iPad and personalized learning initiative. We've had a few guest presentations. Our College and Careers Day, as well as the Columbia Heights Fire Department came in and talked to our eighth graders about the science of fire. And they also talked a bit about the cadet program. So, I had to toss in a sweet picture that Director Mayen took for us. We continue to do our positive behavior interventions and supports. Last year, our eighth graders won the title, the, we do quarterly competitions. And our eighth graders won the most competitions. So, they were the ones that got to go to the camp. But I can't remember the name of it. But they were able to win that. Right now, the eighth graders are a little bit behind. The seventh graders are coming on strong. And so, this should increase our behavior and decrease tardies and decrease failures, any increasing achievement as we have our kids competing with one another. We have a REACH going on. We have African-Americans in Careers Day tomorrow. We have, this year initiated breakfast with the principal. So, once a month, I invite parents to come in and just sit down and we talk. We'll have a topic and we'll have conversation. We have also Choices Years Parent Involvement Specialist Anne Dillard and Yvonne Padilla. And then our urban liaison as well, Sheena Ellis, who've really helped us with outreach this year. Columbia Academy, worlds of opportunity for every learner. We design our future. And we thank you for all the support that you give us as we work through our programs. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Where do you begin?
Are the sixth graders then able to take the iPads home now? Or, okay.
They have been, they, there was a test week in December. And they survived, they passed, surpassed the test. And so, starting in January, they've been taking them home every Monday through Thursday. Then they check them in on Fridays. And we go through and if we have to do any updating, we do those on Fridays. But it's been a, we've only lost a couple of them. But it's been great. I mean, really, when I say a couple of them, I mean like a couple of them. It's been really a wonderful program. The kids have been super responsible. They're bringing them back and forth. And again, Amy has been really helpful, setting the guidelines and setting the tone for professionalism in the classroom and how we're going to use our iPads. Once, there was a marked difference in the hallways when those iPads went on the backs of the kids. I mean, it was like, we're walking and we're getting ourselves to class. And don't take my iPad away. It was really a big difference.
Well, I think it's very exciting to be able to do everything you're doing since we have this technology now available to, to make it a reality. So, the personalized learning, those are all cutting-edge concepts that technology is making possible.
We're especially seeing that personalized learning really take shape in, and take foot in our, take a foothold in our math classes, where we have students really leaping ahead. We have them, they're able to take a quiz. And once they pass that quiz, they can move on to the next concept, an idea. We have then, if students need extra help, they're sitting with a teacher, they're sitting with a colleague, a classmate. I mean, that personalized learning, if you come in and see those sixth grade classrooms, you would be blown away by what's going on with our students. It's really, it's exciting.
Yeah, Laura?
Oh, I just have a comment. I mean, my son is a sixth grader. So, he has the iPad. And one of the things that I've noticed this year from my older, my older children, is that my son likes to spend a lot of time after school, basically working on his homework. You know, he will pull out his, the iPad and he will do the ST Math. As a matter of fact, he also logged in for, on my daughter's, six-year-old, my six-year-old daughter's tablet, he logged in. And she is also participating in it.
Fantastic.
So, it, yeah. And, you know, it's a really interactive thing. You know, she has a problem and he'll, he'll actually, you know, go through and, you know. So, I, I think it's, it is really interesting. I mean, because between books and then the different applications and the responsibility level, that's another thing. He's, he's very conscientious about making sure that it's taken, well taken care of. And I, I, I can see that that would be, I think that they really enjoy that level of trust that, that was put into them. So, they're taking more responsibility for their learning. I'm, I'm really, I'm really encouraged. Thank you. It's a wonderful, wonderful plan.
With the personalized learning communities, are teachers able to get external input as well as internal within the district or within the school?
I think that there's all kinds of online research going on. I think Amy Ochlager does a lot of connecting with outside resources. I think, I know Director Hennigens is always looking for ideas for us as well. But I think their, Schoology itself has, has ideas, lesson plans, even connecting with Khan Academy. Sometimes those videos are put in during our math classes where our students are seeing those. So, they're, they're connecting with a lot of resources. Having kids watch a video in, in an art classroom, I want you to research this specific artist. And she has those things set up, places for our students to go, to specifically look for those artists and artists' statements. So, I think there are a lot of outside... So I think there are a lot of outside resources that our teachers are using.
Yeah, that's so fantastic to hear because that was the vision we've had since the nineties, that we would be able to achieve that. So, thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you both, well done.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on our agenda this evening is the Achievement and Integration Plan and Budget. And Dwayne Burkus is going to give us some information on this plan and budget.
Yes, thank you Chair Bardeel, Superintendent Kelly. I'm back to talk about Achievement Integration, a plan that we have to put in place. If there ever was a fund that is supposed to create worlds of opportunity, I suppose it is this one. And again, I think with the emphasis being on achieving excellence, achievement for all, excellence for all. The Achievement and Integration Grant is in place for us. We have money that comes to us that is to be used for certain purposes. And so, just wanted to remind us all of what those are. First and foremost, that it's to pursue racial and economic integration. So this is often just called the Integration Grant. But it is also now called the Achievement and Integration Grant because we are to increase academic achievement. It is a partner goal with the integration part of it. And to do that through creating equitable educational opportunities, but probably the main focus again being on that reduction of the achievement gap, whether that's in race, ethnicity, or economic background. So, in order to do that, we are required to develop a three-year plan. And this year is the year where all districts that receive this funding are developing their plan. And this plan then must have a certain things that it accomplishes. One is that we will reduce the achievement gap in half while also raising the achievement of white students. As you know, that's the comparison that is made between students of color and white students. It's not that you hold one group back or that you try to raise just certain students, you raise all students and that that gap then is closed as you do that. But with that, you are also working on the racial and socioeconomic integration. So our plan must reflect that those are our goals, that those are the things that we are working towards. All of it then will align to, as we talked about fairly recently, to the world's best workforce. So you'll see a little bit later in the presentation how these two again must come together and that work to a certain degree as one plan. So, as anything, that when you're making a plan for the Department of Education, you start with SMART goals. And so, our SMART goals are really not up to us to a certain extent. Because there is a formula now that says you must reduce this achievement gap by half by 2017. So we know what that achievement gap is. We can do the math and we can see then that over the next three or four years, these are the percentages that we will need to have our students increase on an annual basis in order to achieve that. So that's our goal. Our goal is that, at the bottom, you'll see that all students, that there's an eight percent increase in proficiency over those years. And that in math, that it is a five percent, that we will have those achievement gaps closed if we do that, if we reach the percentages that you see above. So if white is increasing by six in reading and five in math, and we are able to do the rest of these increases for the different cells, we will close that gap. So that's our SMART goal. We know what we need to do, very specifically in terms of those increases in proficiency. So our plan must also then indicate how we're going to do that. And so, there's some key things, there's certain kinds of things that they're looking for. One is that college readiness. And for us, that would be two major pieces of that, but not everything would be Avid and Ramp Up to Readiness, two programs that we are using currently at the high school, Avid actually all the way down to elementary as well. Professional Development, where we are looking at equity, how do we work with students who are coming from backgrounds different than ours? And data analysis, how do we use data to drive the decision-making that we have as teachers? In addition to that, parent involvement we know is key. And REACH, as Principal Busman indicated, is going on tonight. It still goes on. In each of our buildings, over the course of two years, we'll reach every building. We're on our second round of that. We have our community liaisons that continue to work with our parents as well. In addition, we know that we have students who are behind and we need to be able to bring those students up to those college readiness pathways. We have an emphasis in this on building formative assessments where we can give instant feedback to students and use that to help make the learning process more efficient, more powerful. We also have the human side of that, which is our dropout prevention intervention called Check and Connect, where we have interventionists who meet on a daily basis with a set group of students that we believe are at risk of dropping out. So, those are our achievement goals and strategies. We also have to have integrations goals and strategies. So one with the, that we continue to work with WMEP. We have agreements that we have to participate in their schools. Columbia Heights has always tried very hard to live up to those agreements. We will continue to do so. But that also, that we will increase racial integration by fifteen percent. And for us, that may, well, it does mean that we're not necessarily looking for the traditional view of that, where so many schools are very different than us around the state of Minnesota, where there are very few students of color. In our case, it would actually probably mean, according to MDE, that we need to look more towards the kinds of students that we have the fewest of or the kinds of students that are in fewer number. And if our students of color are at about seventy-five percent, that that would actually be our white students who are the minority in terms of taking a look at the total percentage of students of color versus white. So it's a slightly different way that we have to increase racial integration in Columbia Heights versus some of the other districts in Minnesota. So how do you do that? Well, that's an interesting question, I think, for us. One though, is that we do continue that collaboration with WMEP. That's one of our key areas and that satisfies the letter of the law for us, for anybody who is a member of WMEP. But also, we need to, and that money is there, to develop innovative programming, magnet programming that can attract underrepresented students to attend our schools. Those are things like what we showed you as ideas possibly for our summer programming. Or they are particular things like STEAM that we may run, the arts excellence that you see in the students that were here tonight. What are the things that we can do to draw students to our student, to our, to our district? Students who may not be drawn to the same degree or to the same number as others. So, with that then, is with that plan, we also must submit a budget. So here is a, an overview of that budget. You will see that the total dollars at the bottom, eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars, so it's a significant amount of money that comes to us. Guidelines from the state are that eighty percent of those dollars must be used for direct student services. And that would include those areas that we touched on, things like college readiness, family involvement, interventions, all of those things would fall under that. You can see how much money it will take from our funds in order to be able to have those programs in our district. And many of those that have been going now for several years. Professional development and administration can be no more than twenty percent. And you can see that we have about twelve percent there then for professional development and another eight percent to administration and indirect. So, we will be submitting that plan and working with MDE though on the guidelines and process on this because it's all new. And so, we've been to multiple meetings on this, talked again with officials today about what the guidelines and the processes that are in place. And we hope that we can bring this back to on March eleventh, have it approved and send it to MDE then on March fourteenth, and that that will be fine. But we're not always sure with something new. There may be adjustments that have to be made. I think all districts are preparing for that possibility. If so, we will bring those needed adjustments back to you. But then we'll be looking at data. How are we doing? Are we making gains on this? On a quarterly basis, we'll be looking at, are we going to hit those targets or not? What do we need to make those adjustments? The kinds of things that we were talking about with Principal Busman just a moment ago. And then, we will report on this, back to you, but also, we will need to report on this plan in the public meeting that is part of the world's best workforce. So this is a new, again, part of this, of the legislation around integration where we must have a public meeting. And so, our proposal, when we talked about the world's best workforce, was that that meeting take place probably in November, when we've had time to bring back some results from the, from this, from this school year and talk about some of the things that are in place and taking, that are going on next year as well. So, lots going on with getting this plan in place. And again, what we would be with your, if all goes well, we would be coming back to the next board meeting then with the, an action item for your approval.
I have a question. Under the budgetary items, there was twelve percent for professional development. Are there some ideas floating around about special training or if we could, if I could get some more information on that?
We identify certain key areas for professional development that we hope align well with our strategic plan. So, two major areas that we will use these dollars for are Avid, which we believe is a very strong college readiness program. It's, it's a great program, but there is a lot of very intense staff development that goes on with it in the summertime. The other piece that you've heard us talk about and refer to, and we believe is a very strong research-based program, is the whole concept of professional learning communities. When teachers work together as collaborative teams to analyze data, come up with solutions. And that training also takes place in the summer and it's done through another organization called Solution Tree. Those are two major areas that we use our dollars from the Integration Fund in terms of professional development. There are some other smaller things, but the bulk of those dollars go, go to those two areas.
So, you mentioned that other schools also are, have to submit their plans and budgets. Is it primarily the metropolitan schools, districts then?
Yeah, there, not every school district gets integration dollars, as you know, and many of them, most metro, probably all metropolitan school districts do. But there are numerous school districts outside of the metro area now as well that have fairly substantial integration needs. So, we are working with WMEP in terms of, and have met with them and MDE officials multiple times now to try to work through this. It's been an interesting process because as MDE reminds us, they didn't write this legislation either. So there's a bit of them trying to interpret it as well and, and trying to figure out exactly what does this mean in terms of how these plans need to be written.
And then, once all the schools submit these plans and then, I assume they're going to have to report to MDE about, you know, what the effects were, was it helpful? Would then the plan be for the state to make all these public or, you know, the results? Or do you know?
You know, I, I don't know what their plans are in terms of releasing that information out as far as the plans themselves or the data itself. I, it's a very good question. I'll ask and find out what the plan is for that. There is a part, we do have to submit our data to them to show how we're doing because there is this, they are holding us to these, these targets. So that is a change for us where we, we have accountability in terms of saying, okay, if you're not reaching these goals, why not? And what do we need to do in terms of adjusting your plans or working with you to help you do that?
Yeah, I asked the question about being public because of, when we figure out what works, then other schools might want to learn from us and, you know, vice versa. So, that's kind of what I.
Yeah, and I think, I'll be honest, it's one of the, one of the joys of working with other teams on this as collaborative in WMEP is exactly that, that you can share strategies and, you know, sometimes there are new things, sometimes it just really solidifies things like Avid where you find out that there's other school districts having the same success and it makes you realize, okay, this is key. This isn't something we should invest more in.
Yeah, one thing I like about Avid is its advancement via individual determination and teaching, teaching the students how to, how to do it themselves and to reach those goals and set the targets and succeed. That's where technology I see is, from what I've seen from conferences I've been to, can really help as well, is sparking that goal-setting and reaching those targets. So, I guess, I guess I just see the tie with technology in, in helping achieve integration success as well.
Yeah, thanks. We have used some dollars from integration for the purchase of technology. There is a little bit here in terms of those interventions. It's less than it was in previous years in part because of the new regulations that are there. But there is a component of this that is used. Part of, we talked about formative assessment, that's really talking about how can we use technology to do that? So it's as close to being instantaneous as you can get by doing that.
I understand there's also technology, programs to reach parents and, and get the school into the home as well that have a lot of promise.
Yes, yeah.
All right, thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, we have our Director of Finance and Operations, Bill Holmgren, give us information on the updated 2013, 2014 budget.
Chairman Bardeel, members of the board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Yes, good evening. What I've done is I've, we talked about the updated budget at a work session here about, oh, maybe five, six weeks ago already. What I've done though is I brought you the final version of what it looks like when we split this out between assigned and restricted and against the different funds, just to have an idea of what it looks like instead of the broad numbers that I had presented at that work session. So I wanted to just walk through this a little bit with you before we bring it back next meeting to be our final budget for the year. Now again, we have a balanced budget, so that's, that's the good news. As, as I did tell you at the work session, I mean, we definitely had some more revenue come in than we expected mainly because of our student count. But of course, because of the increased student count, we have pressures on staffing that we had to pretty much use those dollars to take care of. And a big piece of the change, again, is because of the final dollars that were received for being the fiscal host for the new ALC up in Fridley in a conjunction with District nine sixteen. So you can see that when you look at our unassigned number, that's really the dollars that we have available as a district to put together programming we feel fit for our students. You see, we have a balanced budget, small excess of seven thousand dollars, but really I see that almost as a zero, that's a flat, balanced budget. Our gifted and talented, you see, what I hear, we spend all the dollars we bring in for our gifted and talented, it's not a very large amount. We actually spend quite a bit more dollars in here when we actually look at programming for our gifted and talented. But this is truly all we receive for that programming. Staff development, this is something that in the last few years has been a much smaller number and we've been trying to get by with the, some of the carryover dollars that we've had. But now, this last legislative session, now there are statutory dollars back available to us. You see, we aren't spending all those dollars in this year. Commensatory dollars, these are extra dollar, I don't want to call them extra because we certainly need them. But this is, these dollars are generated by our free, free and reduced lunch count. So really looking at our poverty index and dollars that are, are given to us as revenue to help in those areas. Grants, what I've always put together a grants line just so you have an idea of the kind of money that comes in under our grants. But this does include all our title grants. It includes the, our specialized federal dollars also. Deferred maintenance is an, is an item that came onto our budget about three, about three years ago as the legislators really saw that. years ago, as the legislators really saw that some of the older buildings really do need some more, more facility needs than a new building. So, there's a formula based on the age of our buildings, so you see that slowly increase over the years. But we get that primarily just for repair and maintenance on our buildings. Of course, isn't really what we need, but we certainly thank them for it. Now, our capital dollars, that's, we've had these for many, many years. That's a combination of aid from our, the state of Minnesota, and in common, combination with levy, and we receive that, about $700,000 every year to work on that. And the capital dollars are, are spent on many, many, many things in, in our district, but primarily, it's, again, repair for our buildings. We've had some smaller projects that we've worked on. And I guess, as an example, we go back to that deferred maintenance line, that, those dollars we used for that steam pipe replacement last year, which we definitely had to take care of. And then, of course, we have health and safety. These are dollars that are, are spent on, on the health and safety of the buildings. It doesn't really tie to health and safety of, of students, or teachers, or, or community, it's the health of the building. And we continually have projects in that area. So, you can see, dollars that come in that are restricted, that we have to use for a very specific reason, is almost 11 million. When we look at our total general fund, we're at 42 and a half million dollars. Our food service fund, again, is balanced fund, relatively healthy fund balance there of 360,000 when we started the year out. Because of some of the menus that the food service has put together, we actually won our award, if, if you remember about a year ago, but that also generated more dollars for us. So, that's, this fund, we feel very comfortable, I mean, we are pretty much using what we're bringing in, but there's no, there's no pressure to spend down our fund balance. When we look at community ed, I split this out again too, you can see kind of the different areas where we get funding. Communities, the community ed unassigned is really pieces that really aren't community ed, and what that is, is, is all our non-public aid flows through here. So, as we receive dollars for busing for non-public schools, as we receive dollars that get reimbursed for homeschools, that all runs through here. So, as you see, there's a negative balance there, but what happens is the next year, we get those dollars replaced by the state of Minnesota. So, don't, I guess, don't be alarmed by that negative, that negative number there under, unassigned. Now, in community ed, there is a small negative number, going from one to the other, very small amount. I think it's going to be better than that. Like I've said in the past, I always want to bring a conservative budget to you. We have made some adjustments in some of our dollar amounts, what we're charging for different programs in that, in that area, but of course, this point, I have no guarantee we're going to collect all those. So, that's why that's still a little bit short, but I think we're gonna be okay at the end of the year. And then, of course, ECFE is split out, because it's a separate funding stream and a separate fund balance at the end of the year, along with the pre-kindergarten. And I guess we'll talk more about the pre-kindergarten as we get to next year's budget, but we'll see some changes in that one for next year. But the both, again, balanced budgets, so, although this fund balance in community ed has been, is down a little bit from where it was a couple of years ago, it's still a healthy fund balance, and we're in good shape there. Now, after that, I've just kind of listed the rest of our fund balances, see what's happening. Our building fund, of course, we see some big changes at this year. We'll talk about the addition here in a minute, but there will be money coming into that Fund Six, or our building fund, to take care of the addition over at Valley View. It won't all be spent out this year, so you see a temporary, relatively large fund balance sitting there over this next June 30th, but then it will disappear for the next. Our debt service, again, these, the only dollars that run through here are dollars to actually pay off any debt that we have, pretty much, we get a little bit from the state of Minnesota as an equalized levy, but most of it is a straight levy to our community. And that's, when you look at your taxes, this is really the primarily what you pay in your taxes is for the debt service fund. The flex account, in, in this, in this district, this has always been accounted for separately. It's, as, it's the FSA or the flex account that you might have in your place of work, where we, we take money out of, out of employees' checks, it sits there for them to use later for different purposes, maybe daycare, or it might be a medical expense. It just sits there and washes back and forth. Our dental, we are actually self-insured when it comes to our dental, and this fund balance has actually slowly been growing over the last couple of years. So, again, this is great news, we really don't look at having to increase any, any premium amounts for our, for our employees in the next few years. Severance, this is a, a piece, this was a money set aside a few years back, that wasn't rolled over into the OPEB trust, and we've been slowly using it for severance, and I see that this will, I, you know, be totally used up this year. The negative amount will be replaced by the OPEB trust, okay? And then, our student activities, we bring in about 200,000 in different fundraising events throughout the year, and it gets spent out again for those different student activities. This pretty, I mean, really haven't seen any fluctuation in that fund for quite a while. And then, of course, we have the OPEB trust. This is very healthy for us. We continue to see actually an increase in the actual size of this fund on a yearly basis, so we aren't using, using it up in any sense. This will be here for very, very many, many more years for our employees as they retire. So, this is great news. So, I just, if, if there are any questions, I just wanted to kind of walk through it so you can understand what's going on with our budget.
Questions, comments for Bill? Sounds like no.
That's pretty clear cut.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Bill.
Okay. Then I'll just move on to our, I'll give you a, a short update on the Valley View project, and kind of what's been, been happening there. Again, our strategic plan is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and you can see here our core values, and when we look at these, this addition, we really are looking at a community, the community portion of our, of our strategic plan, along with excellence, and along with innovation. I think these pieces really tie in nice to what we're doing there for the, for the kindergarten students over at Valley View Elementary School. And I really want to just talk about the schedule. I mean, nothing's actually started there, we've got, done a lot of paperwork, a lot of contracts together, and a lot of specs put together for the building. In February 13, just, just a couple of weeks ago, we did send out the bids, were advertised. We have to advertise those for two weeks, so this past Thursday, it was the second time that it was in the paper. We will, having that bid opening on March 6, so next week, we'll have a pretty good idea what that's going to cost. We feel pretty good about where the numbers are going to come in. At March 11, at the, our next board meeting, we will bring that tabulation to you as an information item, and then we will work with those low bidders before I bring them back to you in April, to actually give them contracts, just to make sure that what they've bid to us really is going to work. The other piece that's going to come to you at next board meeting is the lease financing with Northeast Bank. We're very excited about Northeast Bank, working with us again to lease this addition, just like we do over Highland. They're very excited to work with us, and we're very excited to work with a, a local, local bank. So, we're planning to close April 1st with Northeast Bank on the financing, so the dollars will be available to start the project. Like I said, we will issue the contracts April 8, and then we'll start the, the construction on June 16. So, that'll go through about a, about a six-month window, a little less than six-month, more like, pretty close, actually close to five months. December 19, we expect total completion of the project, and we'll get permission to put students in that building, and it'll be available then January 5, right after Christmas break, to put our kindergarten students into that. And then, of course, next, the next summer is when we'll work on the science and art rooms, the old kindergarten rooms. So, any, any questions there? Okay. At this point, everything's on schedule?
I just wanted to make-
What?
I just wanted to ask if our enrollment is holding.
Actually, it is. Yeah, over at Valley View, we have over 550 students in that building on a daily basis. Our elementary numbers are holding well. Actually, when we look at even our other buildings, they're actually holding this year, where we saw huge decreases last year. So, very excited about that, makes, makes budgeting a little easier.
All right. And then, I think you're up again for the financing piece.
Yes, I, I include the, the amortization schedule from the bank, just so you, you can see what was happening there, because when we bring that lease back to you to sign with the, the bank, next, in, yeah, the next board meeting, March 11, you can see what this is. We've locked in the interest rate at 4.1%. We feel very good about this rate. Actually, a few weeks ago, it was actually higher. We saw a little dip come down, and I think it's very time to lock it in right now before it goes back up. So, very close to the interest rate that we got at Highland, and I feel very, very good about that, because we saw some upticks in our interest rates here the last 12 months. So, we're locked in there, you, you can see where the dollar amounts are going to be, but they're right within the estimates that we had talked about earlier. Is there any questions on that at all?
Questions on there? All right.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Bill.
I'm certainly excited about the pro, the project, and hopefully see some action soon.
All right, next on our agenda this evening are board policies, and these are just first readings. These policies will appear on a future agenda for approval, and I'll read them off quickly. 406, public-private personnel data. 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or abuse. 503, student attendance. 506, student discipline. 515, protection and privacy of public records. 516, student medications. 521, student disability non-discrimination. 604, instructional curriculum. 610, field trips. 618, assessment of student achievement. 619, staff development for standards. And like I said, these policies will appear on a, a future agenda for approval. So, if you have any comments, send them to administration or school board. All right, looks like we're moving on to our action items this evening. And our first action item is the second reading of a board policy. And before I begin, we, we did have some comment on, on board policy 208, so I would request that we pull that for purposes of this meeting, and, and send it back to the subcommittee and take a look at it again.
So, table it to the subcommittee?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by Scott, any discussion on that? No, hearing none? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that's tabled. So, the, the 203.5, school board meeting agenda is okay, and then, there were also some comments on 205, open, open meetings enclosed, and, and the comments were due to an inconsistency on the idea of tape recording versus electronic recording. So, what was done for purposes of this policy to vote on is tape recording globally was replaced by electronic recording. Okay? So, I just wanted to make that clear to all the members before we actually take a vote on moving that forward, so-
Just a word change?
It was a word change. To update the language, and I think, in some parts, we, we had electronic and, and others taped, so it's consistent, we're being consistent and updated, so, so we use them.
Do we need either a word? Can we just put in recording? That kind of covers any potential change? That's probably a Karen question, isn't it?
We thought electronic would cover a wider field. At this point, and since it was already established in the policy, decided to go with that, because it's there throughout, which is more of a 21st century perspective than probably tape recording, which is probably more of a 20th century perspective. So, we went with electronic.
All right. All right, so, do I have a motion to move for policy 203.5 and 205 for approval?
I'll move that forward as amended.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John, any discussion on those policies?
I guess, I would just say, I think the change also reflects on what our procedure, how we actually, how we actually do record.
Yeah.
So, it makes sense.
All right, any other questions, comments on those? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda item is a teacher ECFE, teacher seniority list, and we have Lindsay Bennett here to, to tell us all about teacher seniority list.
Chair Bardel, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, this is standard practice, we do it every single year, it's per the contract. Human Resources keeps an updated copy of the teacher seniority list and the ECFE seniority list, and we send them out each winter, spring. We give the, each unit 30 days to ask any questions. This year, we just had one question, it was about a licensure and a different date, so they had renewed their license and didn't tell us, or I think they added a new license, so we got that corrected. No other questions, no controversies, nothing like that, so we're here tonight to seek approval of the full seniority list.
Who would like to move that forward?
Move that forward.
Motion by Missy, second by Ted, any discussion on the teacher seniority list? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next on our agenda is board chair election. From our last board meeting, we had a 3-3 tie on the board chair election, and just to recap, Mr. Landwehr and I are running for board chair. So, with that, do we have any comments, questions?
I'd like to say a little bit more.
Go for it.
And, and the goal for me tonight, to bring this up, information up, is, is to give us, you know, we try to make data-driven decisions as a board, and I just want to give some more data, so that we can make a good decision on this issue. I just want to talk about my background. I think there's four, actually four reasons, or good reasons, that it would be good to have us change in chair this year, to provide an opportunity to, for other people to, to have a chair position, to experience that. And as far as my background, I have been in every single position on the board except for chair, so I've got a lot of experience, and I, I have held the vice chair position, been actually able to run, had the opportunity to chair a school board meeting. It went very well, very smoothly, so I think I have the, the background and the knowledge to be able to do that, and not have a, a big transition time between, when I get up to speed for being chair. I've also have the desire, I've been to many, many trainings, the MSBA training was the last training that I went to, to get the updated seminar on the latest issues that chairs are, are dealing with. I've been to NSBA sessions on training National School Board Association, and just training in general, as a, as a general board member, which I think a chair really needs to do, and stay on top of things, and be a leader on the board, and I, I've had a strong desire to do that, and I have done that, and I would continue to do that as chair. I, I love the community, I love the, the district, and I've always wanted to make the district be the best it could be, and so that's, that's my desire, is to, to help do that through the chair role, which is the one role I haven't been able to do, or haven't been able to serve in. I have the time to be, time is the second reason where I think I'd be an excellent chair, would be in good hands if, if you were to allow me to be chair. I'm self-employed, I can make the, the meetings that are necessary, I can be, I can represent the board. The chair is sort of the, the face of the board when we're not in meeting, and, and I have the freedom to do that, and will do that. The third thing is, just my, my background, I have experience as a, a chair of the Columbia Heights Charter Commission, did that for two years, was a very, we were very productive during that time, so this wouldn't be the first chair position I've held. I've also run meetings using- I've also run meetings using Robert's Rules of Order, I've actually chaired conventions of over 100 people successfully, and it's a great, it's just a great experience to be able to do that and to facilitate, to facilitate meetings very well and get things done. I have an MBA from the Carlson School, and actually, part of that training is how to facilitate group discussion and group collaboration to reach excellent results, and I would like to use that as well here whenever appropriate. I'm a licensed teacher, which, you know, I think if you can run a classroom, that says a lot, and you can, it's a challenge, and not that this is that challenging as running a classroom at times, but there's similarities, so. And I guess the last thing is, I have a lot of experience, I've been elected three times, you know, sent to this, the community school board, and over those terms, I've been, I've seen a lot, been through a levy renewal referendum campaign, I've been through a technology update campaign, I've been a board negotiator, so my point is, is that I have the experience to, to serve well through a variety of situations, and I've been through, I've been on various task forces for the district, the talented and gifted task force, parent, I've been in a parent group, been through an assessment committee group, so I've got a wide, wide, a variety of experience throughout the district, which I think helps make for a good chair as well. So, thank you for your time, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that's what I've been through, and it's been a pleasure getting all that experience, and I look forward to the opportunity to be able to use it in the chair position.
Call roll, please.
Palmer.
Landwehr.
Bardell.
Bardell.
Barker.
Bardell.
Landwehr.
Landwehr.
Meyer.
Landwehr.
Bardell.
All right, very good. Tie vote, 3-3. Four topics this evening. The.
We have a young man that's going to state wrestling.
No, please do.
Yeah.
Pull your mic over.
He's at Regions, and he's one of our top weight kids, and he's headed down there this next weekend, so we've got some kids going down to XL's venue and watching him, and so we wish him good luck, but that's kind of exciting, we haven't had a wrestler go down to state tournaments in quite a while, so.
No, I didn't know that, thanks for sharing. Topics?
I actually, I actually don't have a topic, I actually had a question, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer it tonight, if this was actually to Superintendent. Would it be possible in our board book to have the presentations and the PowerPoints dropped into Dropbox?
I'm sure it would be, I'll talk about it at the management team.
I know there's a little bit of a timing issue and stuff, but that could be done after the meeting, so I thought I would just ask about that.
I'll certainly talk about that at management team tomorrow.
Okay.
Other topics?
Want to mention the SAKA Empty Bowls fundraiser's coming up in March, I don't know exactly the date, but it's a very good event.
Yeah. All right. I guess we can adjourn to the cold at 8:36.